All right, I would like to call together, call to order the Monday, December 3rd meeting of the Manona State Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Kitzler?
Here.
Alder Coor?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Alder Spate is on his way.
Please rise to the Pledge and Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please their motion to approve the minutes of the November 5th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. Appearances. One that I know of, Jennifer Coor, who would like to speak for the purpose of an award for Lindsay Wood Davis. So Alder Coor.
Thank you. So this is on behalf of the Community Media Committee. As many of you know, Lindsay Wood Davis has been involved heavily in the creation and sustainability of WVMO, and so he has chosen this year to retire from his active duties with the station. And so the Community Media Committee is choosing to recognize him. We did throw it a formal picnic this summer, but I wanted to do it in front of the council as well, and so I'm going to read off what this nice plaque that he will take home, as well as one that hangs in the station, says, "In recognition of his vision and commitment to radio broadcasting, Lindsay has been a driving force in the development of WVMO from its infancy for more than ten years. Like a proud father, Lindsay nurtured this little idea into a thriving young radio station it is today. He has been its biggest advocate, utilizing skills and connections honed over decades in the broadcast business. Lindsay has pushed WVMO to the center stage, outshining some of the biggest commercial radio stations in the area. This little radio station with just 100 watts and its antenna perched on a Manona Fire Department's hose drying tower has become a phenomenon in the broadcasting business, called the coolest little station in the nation. Lindsay's commitment to excellence and passion for community will be a lasting impact on Manona." Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is wonderful, and thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I want to talk, just briefly, I promise, ma'am. Not about VMO. I figure you've heard enough about VMO for me. I want to talk about community media. When I got involved in this committee, '07, I think, it was the Cable Committee, and it was chaired by Bob Miller. Soon after, it was still the Cable Committee, and it was chaired by Jeff Wiswells. Then it was Dennis Kugel who was there, as he helped the transition to broadband and After Dennis, Alder O'Connor, and broadband and telecommunications transitioned to Jennifer Coor and community media. This is a wonderful transition, and is actually sort of the picture of what we hoped then would happen: community media. And you won't find a better example of what we had hoped for than to think about what happened with WVMO. Not its great success with the mass audience, but late August of 2018. At LPFM, the one thing that it has to do is public safety, and we've worked hard on doing that. But when the floods came, the radio station was ready. Not just ready technically, but more importantly, ready -- hello. More importantly, ready with an audience ready to hear. I want to really plead to you to keep that importance of community media in mind over the next few years. You're going to be redoing the website. You'll look at the website, you will see the numbers to mymanona.com shot up at one point. It's when WVMO went on the air and started sending people all the time to mymanona.com. We'll have opportunities to do things in television. The YouTube channel has been a great success. You'll have opportunities to do new communications techniques to all the citizens. You strung together a pretty -- or knit together a pretty good communications project during the floods. I congratulate you all. There's better ways to do that on a more formal basis, and you need to really work on that. The other thing to remember is, the money that funded VMO and that funds community media today is going to go away. That is not a guess, that's an absolute promise. We're on the bottom side of the bell curve. Cable is going away. Now, that's not this year or next year, but it's a slow diminution of the funds. Be ready for it, because you're going to have to put an investment in. So I'll be able to watch from afar, wiggle around a little bit as things happen. I'll have an opinion, of course, but I thank you so much for allowing me to be involved in what was a really fun thing. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you, Lindsay, for all of your efforts. All right, we will move on. There is no public hearing, there is no cassette agenda. Item under Council Action Items, item number 1A, unfinished business. If it's okay with everyone, I'm moving this to the end of the meeting, so that people over here for other things, we can just move through those, and then we'll go into closed session. So item 1C, consideration of Resolution 18-11-2309, approval of a three-lot certified survey map, CSM for Lot 5 of the South Town Assessors Plat, the ShopCo lot. This is put forth by the Plan Commission. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second. Mark, are you going to?
Yeah, so if you go to page 8 of 65 here, it kind of details the -- what's going on here. So basically, ShopCo came in here last year, in early 2017. They asked for to split their CSM into three lots. It was approved in the last year, but then they didn't file it in proper time, so I had to go back through the whole process again. Both the Plan Commission and the Public Works Commission or Committee approved the CSM. There was, if you look at the notes here, there was an issue that was from the Public Works Committee, that they should be required to not avail themselves of the dark store exemption. That was found to be illegal, we took that out of the resolution, so that's been updated.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is approved. Item 1D, consideration of Resolution 18-11-2310, award of contract for construction of Riverfront Park Plaza concession stand and public restroom facility, put forth by the Parks and Recreation Board. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Anderson?
I don't have anything to add since last meeting, other than Attorney Cole was finalizing the contract that would get signed with the contractor. The last we heard from DNR today was that the Joint Finance Committee will not meet yet this year until after the new administration takes over, so we're anticipating and hoping that we can get on their agenda in January. The earliest we could get in and start the construction process anyway is going to be February, but we cannot start this construction project until we have received the grant money.
Questions? Alder Moore?
Is there any risk, given the delay, and given the way the legislature is currently acting, that the committee could change its mind, or that given the 14-day review could somehow flop from where they are?
Yeah, certainly the Joint Finance has that ability to not fund grant projects, although they have historically gone on the recommendation from the DNR on those grant awards.
Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 1D, consideration of Ordinance 12-18-710 relating to vaping in city parks, also put forth by the Parks and Recreation Director. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve. Second.
Jake?
All right, since last meeting, we split up the two ordinances, this that were originally in your packet. This is to expand upon the existing ordinance that says no smoking in parks were posted, so now it will include some language in the ordinance to allow for outlawing vaping, e-cigarettes, et cetera, and then we included in your packet, and I don't know if it's in this packet or not, locations that the Parks and Recreation Board recommended for those signs to be posted at. And this would be an annual review as far as the posting and placement of the signs.
Questions? Alder Kitzler?
This would be a review of the Parks Board?
Yeah, the Parks Board are here.
Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 1F, consideration of Ordinance 12-18-711 relating to expulsion from city parks for rule violations put forth by the Parks and Recreation Director. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Okay, I believe Attorney Cole addressed some of the concerns as far as length of time and some additional language in your packet for consideration for tonight. When we were discussing potential smoking ban and reviewing other communities, this was an option that we had looked at and entertained. With the passing of new ordinances, different rules in the parks, while we see the benefits of some of those, AKA allowing leash dogs in parks, we also see the flip side of it, which are the people that continually violate ordinances even once they've been addressed with those individuals and explained what the rules are. And so as an option, last resort, so to speak, we wanted to be able to have some teeth, be able to discuss with people in the parks, whether it be myself or another staff member, that there are certainly municipal tickets violations that could be given to them, and as a last resort, they could be expelled for a certain amount of time from said park.
Comments? Alder, Alder Wood?
Jake, I sent you an email with some questions. One was, I think, to if you could give some specific examples of the behaviors that you're concerned about.
I would say our largest issue that we have right now is a handful of dog owners that continually allow their dog off-leash or allowing them to defecate in parks without picking it up. That's probably our biggest issue that we have with a small amount of people. We've had people golfing in the parks is against our ordinance, and so we've had interactions with people where we tell them, hey, you know, sorry, but you can't golf in the parks, and here are the reasons why, and then two weeks later, they're out doing the same thing. And so these are people that I personally talk to. And so then I go up and say, hey, remember me? My name's Jake. Again, you're not allowed to golf in this park, and I please ask you to stop doing this, or next time I see you, you're going to be receiving a ticket. You know, then three weeks later, I see the same person again. So it's repeat offenders. I would say dogs off-leash or pooping in the parks. I do have a concern over smoking and the ability for our police department to actively enforce it, and if we have issues specifically at the, you know, skate park or during events that we might have where we are outlawing smoking, that in essence, the enforcement of it or the expectation of our community that we do something about those that are violating these new ordinances, we won't be able to address that.
Anyone else? Alder Groupie?
We had a lot of discussion about this at our last meeting, and I've thought about it a lot since that time, and I think what's most important and what I really appreciate is that it, I think you're really trying to be respectful of not having to encroach upon police time and their duties, and you want to make a personal connection with these people and have it, you know, be an active deterrent to having to hand out any more significant, you know, violations or citations. So I respect the decision of the Parks Board to try to put this in effect, and I want to bring up, you know, Alder Kitzler's suggestion that something like this may be, you know, a future duty of a potential park ranger. But I think, given the questions that you've answered and the fact that you want to make a personal connection and really try to make sure that people are being respectful is important.
Anyone else? Alder Wood? And then Alder Spate?
So I, well, I'm going to go ahead and move to amend this to limit the period to 30 days rather than 180 days.
I'll second that.
And then I would, I had asked Jake, or told you I was going to make that motion, what your thoughts would be on a 30-day limitation?
I'd have no problem with that.
Alder Spate, did you want?
Yes, well, it relates to this potential amendment. I fully support the notion of giving our Parks Director this power, but I do think that, given the, I don't know if we call it extrajudicial authority that exists here, that there should be some limitations on it. I'm much more comfortable with a smaller time period, and I think 30 days is reasonable. I would also say that I think that it's important, and I'd be interested in potentially amending this, to suggest that the expulsion can only happen after a warning has been given to an offender, which is to say it would be a documented warning, where you go up and you approach someone and you say, hey, look, you know, you can't do whatever it is you're doing right now.
Sure.
And I'm going to write this up, and I need you to know that as the Parks Director, I do have the power to expel you from our parks for up to 30 days, and unfortunately, if I see you again out here, that's what's likely to happen. And to me, you know, that takes out a lot of the potential arbitrary nature of this. I mean, I trust that you're not going to abuse this power, Jake, and yet, you know, I think the way we structure it is part of what allows you to be successful in administering it. So I think it's perhaps a second issue in a second amendment, but once we've voted on this first amendment, I'm going to move that we consider a second one.
Okay. Anyone else? Alder Kitzler?
Do, I feel like I should know this, since I was on the Library Board for a little while. Do we know the process that they follow as well? I mean, so they have, I don't believe that they're restricted to a day amount, but they do. I mean, to Chad's point, and I was going to suggest this as well, is they do document, and I know as a board, we expelled a few people for a duration, and we had documentation of what and what days they were contacted, et cetera, and what their responses were. So, I mean, I do agree with that, but I didn't know if anyone knew the process that the Library Board follows, or the Library Director? Okay. And then, I'm sorry, I should have done my homework. It's not, if I may, it's not in the ordinances, so apparently that's policy. Okay. 30 days, you said you're fine with. Do you think it ties you to, I don't know, to less of a punishment, or?
I would recommend that we would say up to 30 days.
Yeah.
So it could be two days for a, you know, habitual whatever.
Yeah.
And up to 30 is a max.
Okay.
And certainly, just so this board knows, this is a, this is not a handout of, you know, you're banned, you're banned, everyone's banned from parks. This is a, this is now the 12th time that we've asked you to not do this, or, you know, we've now documented it, and it's, we've entertained police calls for citations, and it's now got to the point where it's disrupting other people's enjoyment of the park.
Yeah. I guess my comment to that is, you know, maybe that's why I wasn't too concerned about the up to 180 days, for two reasons. One, it's set up to 180 days, and then, for the second reason, you know, there are maybe three people that you always talk about at the Parks Board.
Right.
That violate this, so I already know, you know, it's a small, small group.
Correct.
And we have evidence of them, you know, violating.
Correct.
So, you know, so, yeah, so I have no problem with this. I do think that, you know, you're being respectful of not wasting the police officer's time, but also wanting to put some teeth into some sort of punishment.
Anyone else?
I'd like just one last brief, I guess, response to that. The reason I want to lower it to, from 180 days to 30, is because it's, to me, you know, we're giving city staff or the authority to ban somebody from public property, and without really any prior, with no prior due process, the due process all would come after it, rather than if you got a speeding ticket or some other ordinance violation, you wouldn't be punished until after you've been to municipal court. So it's, you know, we're giving extraordinary power, and to me, being expelled from public parks would be a lot more serious than a lot of ordinance violations that I could fight in municipal court. So that's why I propose the limit to up to 30 days.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor of the motion as amended with the change to 30 days?
The amendment first.
The amendment, all in favor of the amendment to 30 days, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Alder Spate, did you?
So I was thinking that we would want to additionally amend this ordinance to say that, and I do apologize, I didn't have this written down. After, after it would say, I guess we would want to add it in saying, the Parks and Recs Director may expel from any park for a period of up to 30 days, any individual, comma, having once been issued a warning.
Having previously been issued.
Or having previously been issued a warning.
Hold on, hold on. A written warning? Or just a verbal one?
Well, it'll be a verbal warning by Jake, but then he'll document that.
Okay, okay. So just a warning, a deswarning?
Yes.
Okay.
Comma, and then as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Jake, can you clarify? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Alder Moore, did you?
Well, I was just a little concerned, I definitely agree with the documentation from a due process standpoint, if we're going to ban somebody in the park. I'm a little concerned that that indicates that he could expel somebody from a park for 30 days after a singular warning.
Yeah.
That seems pretty extreme to me. That, that just after one occurrence of somebody smoking a cigarette, or their dog being off-leash, or, I mean, I'm quite certain we don't do that anywhere near close to that now. Right?
No.
And that just seems like a little extreme, that, I mean, it's one, you know, it'd be one thing if they were dealing drugs in the park or something like that, but it seems like one occurrence seems a little extreme. I mean, and I know that he has the discretion to not do it after one.
Right.
But I guess that it implies that he could do it after just one occurrence. That seems extreme to me.
Called a Groupie?
From what you're describing, it seems as though these are people who have done it more than once previously, and may or may not have been issued a verbal warning prior to when this would occur, correct?
Correct. I mean, the vast majority of the time that we have interactions of staff with people in the parks that are violating ordinances, it's merely just that. It's a verbal warning. It's a, hey, what you're doing is against our ordinance, please don't do it again, type of deal. Or, hey, next time we see you, you know, we're going to have the cops called and write you a citation, even though that next time may be two or three times, because we're busy with other things, whatever it may be. So I, I can't see a scenario in which we would verbally warn someone and then expel them after one occurrence. It's multiple upon multiple times that it would be a, you know, warning before we would go to that point.
So is, so is a possibility, could it be after one, a citation? With the assumption being that if, if you verbally warn somebody for a number of times, and then they're habitual, then, you know, you might call on the police or fine them because of the ordinance, and then you would, so it's after one citation rather than just after one warning?
Alder Wood, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, so the, without the amendment, the Director could ban somebody for the first violation, the way it's, so I think the intent of the amendment is to require that there be at least one prior documented contact with an individual before, so it would be only on the second, and I don't think that that, even on the second, that he's going to use that authority, but, you know, you could word it differently, you could say repeatedly violating, but then you get into, you know, it becomes fuzzy what repeatedly means, so I think it's better to just say, you know, after a documented warning, as the amendment proposes.
Alder Groupie?
I guess I would just respectfully disagree that a single warning is insufficient to deter, I mean, to me, I think if you, I can understand somebody going into the park and not knowing that there's an ordinance about golfing, for example, but if they're told directly, that's something that I think would easily, you know, you would not repeat now knowing the rule, and if you did, you would be in knowing violation of a rule that you've been told directly by the, in this case, by the Parks Director. So I guess in my, in my opinion, I think a single warning is sufficient, and it sounds like that, you know, it wouldn't necessarily just be a single verbal warning and then an expulsion if it was a repeat offender or a repeat violation, but to me, that should, for a person violating a rule, be a sufficient number of times to have been slapped on the wrist before a more serious consequence is handed down.
Attorney Cole, do you want?
This is clearly a policy issue that is your prerogative, and I shouldn't intervene, but I would point out one thing, I mean, I can think of several scenarios where you don't want to have to repeatedly warn. If you have somebody that was, has a dog that has a propensity to bite people, and Jake warns them, keep them on a leash, and he sees them the next day off-leash with children around, I think you want him to be able to summarily remove the person. If somebody's hitting golf balls in the park, and there's kids playing, and they're warned, it's likely you might hit a kid. I think it's appropriate, I don't want to say appropriate, I guess appropriate is your call, but I think if you require repeated warnings in circumstances which could have a high probability of injuring somebody, I think we do expose the city. And I don't, you know, hopefully that wouldn't happen. I would just think, keep in mind what you're authorizing tonight is what he's required to do. He doesn't have to do that. He could issue 14 warnings if in his discretion he thinks that's appropriate. This is just what you're making him do before he can do it. And I think with parks, there are certain circumstances where I think public safety would dictate, fine, you give him a warning, but if it's going to happen again, I think you need to give him the authority to deal with it promptly.
Sure. Anyone else?
Which is, that's what the amendment does, though. I mean, it requires one warning, and if it's a serious enough threat to public safety, you know, you and, and if it's a serious enough threat to public safety, now he still has the option of calling the police and saying it's a serious threat, so.
Anyone else? I just have a question. Is it a documented, do you say documented warning there, Joan?
No, it says not say documented warning. That was not the amendment. It just says issued a warning.
Kind of seems like maybe you might want to add documented. Just my suggestion.
Yeah, well, so I'm struggling with how to, and again, I had some thoughts on this, and Alder Wood and I communicated briefly yesterday, having similar thoughts, but I didn't put it to paper, and, um, and I assumed Alder Wood had already put it to paper.
No, not this one.
No, so that's fine, my bad. But, um, I don't want us to create a barrier. I mean, this only has any relevance if Jake has the power to expel someone who's engaging in dangerous or, you know, well, I mean, we have ordinances against things which are a danger to public safety, and that's why they exist, and why we want him to be able to do something that discourages with greater force, hopefully, than what he's currently able to do. That said, I don't want him to walk up to someone who's violating a rule, perhaps unbeknownst to them, and expel, you know, be able to expel them from the park, which is why we want the warning. I do want him to document it as a matter of policy, but I don't want someone to come back and say they were illegally expelled from the park because they weren't given a written warning, and I don't expect Jake to carry around a ticket book that, you know, where he writes up warnings to people. If, if that's a reasonably simple thing that perhaps we should do, then I wouldn't mind making that amendment, but my thought is, you know, he can walk up to someone who he sees in violation and simply give them the warning, he's gonna document it, but the ordinance simply, I mean, you know, it's gonna be a he said, he said, if someone wants to contest this, but to what Alder Moore, you know, said, like, the whole point of this is to avoid having to go through the court system and hopefully not have to do that and involve the police, you know, so I don't want to issue a ticket, and then they have to go to court, and then there's no ability to take this action. It's complicated, but I'm not sure, I mean, we're in uncharted territory here. I'm not used to this particular art of compliance.
Alder Kitzler?
So I'm supportive of this amendment as is. I don't think we should tie his hands or anyone's hands, you know, and at least when I'm commenting, it's not on you. It's, I'm more worried about whoever the next person is, because you never know who we're gonna get, so, or, you know, a bad day for you, no. So I, I just don't want to tie his hands any further, and I think, you know, we've put a lot of discussion in this today, uh, whatever, three, two or three weeks ago, as well, and I think if Alders really do care about this issue, that next operating budget, we should talk about and look at a park ranger system, whether that's looking at if we ever have a vacancy in, you know, the maintenance staff, or whatever, what have you. I mean, that's, that's the way we're gonna get around it. Our police officers will never be able to go out and give tickets the way we would like them to. And Jake, you know, he's expressed he doesn't want to, nor is it necessarily his job to go around and give tickets, so, I mean, we need to give this some teeth. We need to give him the flexibility, and I think the way it is, you know, I support it. I don't want to tie any more hands, and, again, if we really do care about it with, you know, over 40 minutes of discussion on this item, uh, from the last two days, or two meetings, we should look at a park ranger, and when we talk about staffing, need to have that included, and then you can decide whether you really want to put some teeth into it or not.
Anybody else? Alder Moore?
I, I'm totally supportive of it, too. I think that Attorney Cole's point is a point well taken. I mean, obviously, there, I was thinking of far less serious violations than, than somebody that would, something that would cause injury. But, but I guess I would also ask Attorney Cole if, from a due process standpoint, if it was just Jake, or the director, Park and Rec, giving a verbal warning, and then going back to his office and documenting something, but not telling the individual that he was necessarily documenting it. Um, and then occurrence number two, he comes along and says, "You're banned from the park for 30 days," and the individual then goes to court or sues the city because they think they were unduly treated. Um, you know, from a, from a due process standpoint, is it gonna be important for us to document something with that individual to, because then, because then it is, you know, I mean, I could see a scenario again, where, I mean, somebody, you know, accuses us of racism, or someone accuses us of sexism, or, you know, cruelty to animals, or, you know, any number of things, and if we, if we don't have anything other than his notes, does that put us in a more vulnerable position?
No, I mean, the point's well taken on due process, and that's why we do have at the end of this language, anybody that's aggrieved by this can file an administrative appeal.
Okay.
And they will have a hearing where they can come in and they can say, you know, "No, my dog wasn't at large. I had a leash. Jake is lying," and Jake will presumably refute that testimony with whatever evidence we have. Now, with the proposed amendment, we haven't voted on it yet, but assuming Chad's amendment were to pass, the appellant could also claim, "I wasn't warned," and it would be incumbent on Jake, well, I guess me, through Jake, to prove that they were warned. The manner in which we prove that isn't really that important.
Okay.
For instance, I mean, I have municipal court cases all the time, where my only evidence is the testimony of the police officer. I have no evidence that they were speeding. I don't have the radar gun. I have the police officer waving, raising their right hand and saying, "And the radar detector said they were going 52 miles an hour." So I, I think it's, it's good enough if that answered your question.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor of approving Alder Spate's amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Amendment is approved. Now, Joan, would you like to read the changed?
Oh, sure, just that first line, I think, is the only change. "The Parks and Recreation Director may expel from any park for a period of up to 30 days, any individual having previously been issued a warning, found to be violating or reasonably suspected based upon," et cetera.
So I, I think we did have a motion and a second already, correct?
Yes, we did.
Any further discussion?
I had one.
Alder Wood?
Sorry to draw this out any further, because I'm afraid Alder Kitzler may start lobbying for two additional positions in next year's budget. Just wondering, but just, so basically, right now, this gives the final say on appeal to the Park and Rec Board. That, as I read that, that would mean the City Council wouldn't be able, would have no power to overturn that. Is that right?
That's correct. I mean, you certainly could. The way I drafted it was just to foreclose perpetual appeal.
Right. I only raise it because, you know, I, you could see the potential if there's, you know, if, say, controversial situation, for whatever reason, you know, are we comfortable with leaving it at, with the Park and Rec Board?
Alder Kitzler?
I guess as the Park and Rec Board Chair, at least at the current time. I'm not arguing for a grab of power, if you will. But I would say, so, I mean, the Park and Rec Board, one argument for it is they have the most knowledge about what's going on. I mean, again, there are three individuals that Jake consistently talks about at the Parks Board, so we at least have some background knowledge of, you know, what's going on, what are the problems, what he's tried to do to solve them. And I would like to think, you know, if the, the Board has an open mind, that if it was an egregious, you know, abuse of power of expelling somebody, that they would, you know, kind of see right through the director, whoever it may be, and, you know, overrule, or lessen. I mean, that's a whole other thing, right? So if it's 30 days, the Board could always lessen it to two days, or something of that sort. So that's my, you know, that's my argument for it.
Anyone else? All in favor of this item as amended, this ordinance as amended, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jake. On to new business, item 2A, consideration of resolution 18-12-2313, authorization of revisions to the proposed Phase 1 PIP within redevelopment area number nine for Yohara Commons GDP and Phase 1 PIP put forth by the Plan Commission. Mark, you said that Corey was not able to make it tonight.
Yeah.
So would you want to address this? And then Nancy and Chad, feel free to chime in.
So basically, uh, Callaway came to the Plan Commission for the current, for the current revise of PIP. In, uh, page 30 of the, on the packet, there's five things, there's five major changes they went with there. In each, they document all five of them, what they are. Basically, the exterior of the building has changed with the colors, and these were all reviewed by the Plan Commission and approved at the Plan and Commission. And from each there, in the packet, too, also shows the different changes on each, one through five, and what those changes would look like.
Any questions, or Nancy and Chad, did you, either of you have anything to add?
I, yeah, I would just add that the, I, I know that I was particularly concerned at Plan initially over the use of fiber cement, and they were in fact going in a different direction initially, because of concern over fiber cement, but the, the other material that they were going to use is not warranted for the height of the building, so that's why they have gone back to fiber cement, and, but, but we're confident that they can, they can apply that fiber cement, exercising all safety precautions. And otherwise, I would say that the, the overall response from the Plan Commission was extremely positive. We think that the, the color change is actually a really smart thing. Um, when we actually saw the brick material and saw the panels that are gonna be used, they're extremely high quality, on the additions of some of the other wood, that they also, there's small changes to the amount of wood in the building as well, and it was all received very positively by Plan.
Any questions? This'll come back at the next meeting. Item 2B, consideration of resolution 18-12-2312, approving a memorandum of understanding with Dane County for 911 dispatch services put forth by the Public Safety Committer, Committee Chief LaStranga.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So we've been talking about this for about the last two years, in the last two capital budgets. We knew that we had to replace our 911 equipment. It's beyond, it was originally installed around 2009. When we originally put it in, it was about 97,000. Replacements on that equipment today would be in the range of 150 to 200,000. We found through surveying how many actual hard-wired, well, let me back up. We've, we've never gotten wireless 911 calls. The county has always taken the wireless 911 calls, which are a majority of the 911 calls to the police. And then what they have done is they insert the information into the CAD. The CAD pushes it to our dispatch, and our dispatch, dispatches our officers. What we found is that with the hard-wired 911 calls, which is the only 911 calls that our equipment is capable of receiving, they've dropped dramatically. We get less, if we get two a day, that's a lot, and most of those have been from senior centers, places like that where there are ambulance calls. And the way the protocol is set up, we don't dispatch the ambulance. We have to take basic information, transfer the call back to the county. The county goes through a whole protocol of asking questions, and then they are the ones that then dispatch the ambulance. So it, it doesn't seem to be cost-effective to replace that 911 equipment. It's not in the 2019 capital budget. What was passed in the 2019 capital budget was to remove the 911 equipment and install two basic workstations that would incorporate our dispatch with our current phone system. The future of 911's constantly changing, the technology's constantly changing, they're gonna start going to text messages, video messages, and we, we just don't have the staffing or personnel capable of doing that, those extra duties. So we're not getting rid of dispatch, we're just getting rid of a hard-wired 911 phone number, which the county will then answer that call and then transmit the information back to us. So this formalizes that process.
Alder Groupie?
So I just want to articulate on the record, we discussed this at the Public Safety meeting, that if someone were to have a concern about continuing to pay dispatchers to be active and in the office despite this transference of duties to Dane County, you said that they continue to touch every call after it's processed, write reports, they assist in record-keeping, et cetera, and so they still have a number of duties and community services that they provide, which means that we still need to retain these people and their salaries despite this change.
Yes.
And what percentage?
Nope, I just wanted, I just wanted, you said it very well at our last meeting, and I just want to make sure that if a constituent is to have a concern about retaining dispatch after this change, that there are other responsibilities that they continue to have to the community, including continuing to touch every call once it's been processed.
Yeah, and it gives them an opportunity to focus more on the call, instead of the screening of the call. The way the county dispatch set, uh, system is set up is you have call takers, the people who actually answer the phone, they enter the data, and it gets pushed to an actual dispatcher. So basically, we're doing the same thing. We're just having the county be the call taker on the 911 calls, and push it to our dispatchers to, to talk to our officers. We still answer the non-emergency lines, and we answer the front window, too.
And what percentage of our calls did you say were non-emergency? It's a large percentage, isn't it?
A great percentage, yeah. I don't, I don't have that number firmly, but most of our calls come in on the, the non-emergency line.
And dispatch will still be there.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Doug?
Under the consideration paragraph, it allows the county to give, if they have to increase staff, or have overtime, or other costs. As a result of taking on our calls, it allows them to basically, um, give us 90 days' notice about that, and then they can increase their levy, and we would have to increase, decrease our levy limit in a corresponding amount. Is, do you think there's any reasonable possibility that that's going to happen?
I, I personally don't think so. No, I don't think they can justify, with the few calls that their additional calls are going to get, that that would have any impact on the tax levy. This is basically a carbon copy of the same deal that Sun Prairie signed with them, and it's, it's, it's getting less and less of the independent dispatch centers of handling the 911 calls. Middleton is probably gonna stick with theirs, but Stoughton, Fitchburg, Sun Prairie, they've all gone to the county, and they've not been charged for any additional fees.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next item, consideration of resolution 18-12-2314, approving a contract amendment for Riverfront Park Engineering and Construction Administration put forth by the Parks and Recreation Director. Jake?
Hello. So in your packet, you have the original engineering contract with Strand, and then an amended contract that highlights a scope that went above and beyond the original contract, that was determined during the design phase of some additional amenities and some options for alternatives as we go through the construction phase. That equates to about $10,000 roughly, as far as a scope change, and then approximately $30,000 would be for construction observation during the actual construction project. Initially, that was estimated around $25,000, due to the multiple disciplines needed to be on site- Due to the multiple disciplines needed to be on site, we're looking closer to $30,000 for construction observation.
Questions, anyone? Next item D, consideration of resolution 18-12-2315, amending the 2019 capital budget for Riverfront Park Engineering and Construction Administration, also put forth by the Parks and Recreation Director.
This is where the money comes from to pay for it.
Questions, anyone? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go back to item G1A, convening closed session under Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, front one, front C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This involves hiring of the city administrator and section 19.85, front one, front E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, this involves discussion of potential future city facilities, site, and land acquisition. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Tom?
Second.
Little clerk, please call the roll. Alder Groupie? Aye. Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
The next item, we're going to split it into two items, actually, is item 2E, confirmation of appointment of city administrator. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, oh, sorry. Slow down.
You're fired at the clerk yet. Motion to take a order.
You only hope.
By Wood?
By Kitzler.
By Kitzler, second.
Yeah.
Okay.
And move to approve.
We got a vote on it.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to confirm the appointment of Brian Gatto to the position of City Administrator/ Economic Development Director for the City of Monona?
So moved.
To approve.
Second.
Moore, Kitzler?
You can give it to Nancy, to Alder Moore.
And Wood.
Pick two other ones for the second part.
More and Wood, there you go.
More and Wood.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to take the second part of this, the approval of an employment agreement with Brian Gatto, is there a motion to take that out of order?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move approval of the contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Got it? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brian Gatto is contingent on approval of his background check, is the, will be the new city administrator of Monona. The next item is reports of committees, commissions, boards, et cetera. Alder Coor?
A while back, you had asked about potentially doing an actor shooter training, and we had discussed it at our most recent public safety meeting, and that committee is, is going to be hosting an active shooter training, hopefully in this room on the 23rd, and that's going to be open to council as well to attend.
I'm sorry, what date?
January 23rd.
Oh, okay.
It's our regularly scheduled public safety meeting time.
And what time do you meet?
Six.
Six, okay. Well, I think that would be a very valuable thing for all of us to take. Anything else?
Quick note, the Loud in the Library fundraising event, tickets will go on sale December 10th, so keep an eye out for those. It's a fun event, January 26th is the date.
Okay.
Seven to 11 this year.
Yes.
Extending the hours.
All right.
What date, I think, I want to say?
December 10th.
And the event is actually, did you say the date, the last Saturday of?
January 26th.
Okay. Alder Kitzler?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Spade?
No report.
Alder Moore?
No report.
Alder Groupie?
I have several announcements from the library. Story Jam, which is the kickoff of the One Community Many Voices project, will be on December 12th at 6:00 PM, featuring treats by Madison Sour Dough, and I think it's going to be a great time, so you can check that out on the library website. Also, something discussed at our most recent library board is that according to SCLS data, Monona is, the Monona Public Library is number one in visits per capita in the entire state of Wisconsin, so it's a pretty big deal. Feeling excited about it. We just partnered with a new cleaning company for the library, and I think everyone on the staff is very excited about that transition. And then a final note, as I'm obligated to do as representative, is just mention that they're still continuing to experience HVAC issues and...
We're shocked.
Right. But, but would like to, you know...
Alder Moore.
Have some, make some headway on that, so just want to be, you know, just want to rep, so.
Hopefully, the balancing will take place fairly early in the new year. I'm not sure if we have to go out to bid for that, I would assume, or what, but. Attorney Cole, do you have anything to tell us?
The mediation session in Four Lakes Yacht Club litigation will be this Thursday.
Okay. I had hoped that we would not meet on December 17th, but we will be meeting to at least consider the new business room today. I, we've gotten in a real habit, I think, of doing a lot of things on one read, and I'd kind of like to get away from that, if possible, so, and there probably will be other things by then, but we'll try to make it short. The other thing is, I know those of you who are up for reelection, Joan has your packets ready, if you haven't picked them up already, so, okay. There's only one appointment tonight, Claire Lempke to the Community Media Committee, effective immediately through April 2019. Is there a motion to approve her appointment? Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Congratulations, Kitzler and Wood.
Are you, have everything?
You're going to be ready.
All in favor, say aye. Everybody say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.